Okay, welcome to city council meeting. Thanks everybody for joining us in person and online or on the TV station. We're happy to have you here on November 15th, 2022. Thanks for coming. We'll get our agenda underway and start with the prayer and motivational message. And then we'll go to Councilman Argyle to lead us in the pledge. Councilwoman Beck has our motivational thought and message.
Well, I had the assignment to get someone to do it. So Lillian Kump, I invite you to join us up here and share your message and offer an opening prayer.
Doesn't matter what order I do this in?
Yep.
Okay, I will share my message. Always pray to have eyes that see the best in people, a heart that forgives the worst, a mind that forgets the bad, and a soul that never loses faith in God. So with that, we'll go to our prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we're so grateful to be here and be part of this city council meeting. We're grateful for this community that we live in and that we have so many that want to be able to create a better environment for all the residents of Spanish Fork. We have to see their blessings, bless those in this meeting that their thoughts and concerns may be addressed and that they will be able to get the answers that they're looking for. Bless this council that they will be able to continue to make choices that will better our community and help our residents and city thrive. I mean, we say these things in Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lillian. Councilman Argyle.
Could the audience please rise and reflect the pledge? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You'll notice we're down one team member today up here would like to excuse Councilman Marshall. He is busy with his day job tonight, and so we'll get him next time. That'll take us to item C, following up on any previous comments, any from last council meeting? Okay, that'll take us to item D, employee of the quarter. I'm not sure who's...oh, you are presenting that, all right.
I think Cindy, one of our employees of the quarter, so we recognized two of our employees of the quarter a couple of weeks ago, but I think Cindy has the largest cheering section we've had. Right there. I don't know if they can...yeah, that shows you how loved Cindy is. So one of the comments we got here from one of her coworkers, Cindy's workload has steadily increased. We have had multiple issues with the net metering we've had to work through as well as adding shared solar. The meter shortage has also increased her workload because she's having to estimate a lot of reads. She never complains and works hard to get things done to the best of her ability. So Cindy is our utility billing manager, so she's dealing with meters for power and water and pressurized irrigation. With power, we've had a couple of changes over the past few years with solar, both with the shared solar program where people can purchase solar production, not at their house, but over there by Lowe's and in Mona, there's another solar farm they can contribute that way. Yeah, so her job has changed a little bit in the past few years, and she's been awesome dealing with those changes. And we have a meter shortage right now, as many of you know, that things are hard to get, and meters are one of those things. But Cindy is one of the sweetest people I've ever met, and she actually has a...she's pretty quiet, but she has an amazing sense of humor. And she's one of those people that doesn't understand quite how amazing she is. She does have a difficult job. She's responsible for billing over 15,000 customers each month. She bills over $40 million worth of bills each year, and we have over 35,000 meters that she's getting reads from each month. She gets to have some difficult conversations with customers sometimes about their bills, but one thing I love about Cindy is she always treats everyone with respect and empathy that they deserve. Yeah. Cindy, you want to come up?
Surprisingly, I'm a little emotional right now, and I don't know where that came from, but I do want to thank my fan club in the back. And Jordan did ask that I keep this very short, right? But I just want everyone to know that I am so grateful for my job. I don't know where this comes from, but I, over the past couple of years, I've needed a purpose to my day, and my job has provided that daily purpose. Because I feel like I'm contributing in good ways, and they give me somewhere to go. But I will also say I couldn't do my job without the people that I work with, and that's everyone from the electric department to the water department and human resources, public works, community development administration, and my girls in my office. I adore them, I really do. And I wish I wasn't crying. I am so sorry. So, but thank you, I appreciate the kind words and the recognition. Thank you.
Congratulations, Cindy. We have a certificate for you, and we want to shake your hand and give you that certificate if that's all right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Probably going to make you stand up here and take a picture.
Yep, they do pictures.
Well, it's better than that one.
The high-res one wasn't available tonight. All right, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
You're good now.
Yep. Back to work, Cindy, back to...thank you so much and that great heartfelt message. And yes, speaks to the good work you do, and I know the friendly face I've seen around the city office is not just something we get to see, but all the citizens of Spanish Fork too. So thank you, thank you for taking care of us so well. Okay, that takes us to item E. Mr. Nick Porter is going to talk to us about the graduating class of Spanish Fork University, the third class, is that right?
This is the third class, so I'm going to have them go up here, and Seth's going to press play. This is, we won't watch the whole thing, but this is a video slideshow of just some of the things that this class has been involved in. So why don't you graduates come on up so the camera can see you. So this group, we had our largest group ever. We had 18 graduates of Spanish Fork University. They spent 10 weeks on a Wednesday night and met with staff of different departments each night. They learned the ins and outs of what Public Works does to Parks and Recreation. They spent a night with the library, with admin and finance. They got to do some hands-on stuff with Fire EMS and police, Splice Fiber with SFCN. And I'm probably missing somebody, but I'm pretty close. Yeah, they got to shoot some guns. There was a lot of gun shooting at the gun club, and some people shot some of our police officers. So it was a good time. So we just wanted to recognize this class as a group of individuals that really has more of an in-depth understanding of the city and how it works, and hope that this is the third of many classes to come. So can you just give this group a round of applause for their time commitment, interest? So thank you. I'm going to, we're going to take a picture with the council here, then I have a photo for you and another gift out in the hall. So scoot in like you like each other.
I hope it's a t-shirt. I didn't check. I hope it is.
All right, one, two, three. Okay, perfect. You? Y'all want to join me outside for a second?
Congratulations, guys.
Guys, appreciate it, thank you. It was said the other night at their graduation, a few comments about how good of a program that is, but here in the public square, just to reiterate that, if, I know there's another one coming up in the spring, if I'm, is that right? So you'll see information for another sign-up, and obviously, there's only so many spots that we can take and be effective, but I'd encourage anybody that wants to know a little bit more about the city and get involved, it's a great, great first step, and kudos to Nick for spearheading that, kudos to all the departments that allow it to happen and really do give a bunch of time and stuff to a good cause like that. So, good stuff. Spanish Fork 101, I told them they can hang their degrees right next to their college degrees. It's probably worth more that you know about Spanish Fork, so...okay, anybody else want to talk about that?
Awesome.
Okay. Takes us to item four in our agenda, public comments. This is where the general, the public can address the mayor and council in a general setting, so we'll open it up to the public for those comments. Anybody want to come up and speak to the mayor and council? Yes. You have to state your name again before Tara to get it in the record.
Again, I'm Lillian Kump, and I'm here to represent Tabitha's Way Local Food Pantry. As you know, during the holidays, we do our best to help families in need, and we're doing a Thanksgiving basket giveaway this Saturday. But I'm actually here about our Christmas dinner giveaway that we're doing in December, and we have a special invitation for the mayor and the city council if they would like to come and volunteer on that day to help give out those baskets to families in need. So I've got one of these for each one of you.
Perfect. Thank you, Lillian.
We'll make sure Councilman Marshall doesn't show up in shorts last year.
Oh, that's right, that was.
He had to run home and change.
We had pictures last year, and we picked the coldest day.
Oh, it was cold.
Of the year, huh? We couldn't. But always a great thing to be teamed up with Tabitha's Way, so thank you, Lillian, thanks for that invitation. Anybody else from the public?
I'd just like to...
Put three minutes up on this guy, so...
There's no clock that's on the screen, so I'm thankful for that.
We'll let you know.
John Mendenhall, longtime resident of Spanish Fork. And I'd like to first thank the mayor and city council and all of the staff for the kindness and support that they've shown me and my family in the past few weeks. But tonight, I'm here to thank our first responders. About a month ago, we had an emergency at my house that necessitated to call for help. And when we called for help, we had two ambulances, a fire truck, well, one ambulance and one EMT truck, and we had the fire chief, we had policemen all come up to our house. They were there in six and a half minutes. That's pretty dang good. And I attribute that a little bit to the new fire station and public safety station, Station 62. They came and they were so professional and so kind and provided us a service that we needed at that time. And they were very supportive of everything that we wanted to do, and they understood our situation. And it looked like we just needed to get my wife to some help, and they took some vital science and stuff and agreed with us. And we said, so we'll just get her out to the family room and have her sit there for a minute, and we'll go on our way. They said, let us help you, let us help you get her out and down and however we have to do it, and we'll wait until you get in the car. We said, well, we're not ready to go yet. My wife was in condition to talk to them and everything like that. So they helped us with that and got us to the family room where she was comfortable. And about, and we said, that's great, we think it will be fine, she could walk on her own. And so we let them go, and about an hour later, when we were ready to go to her doctor's appointment that she had, she had another very weak spell, and she went down on the floor again. We knew that we needed some help. At that point in time, we needed the help of the ambulance crew again. So we called again, and the same people showed up. And again, they were so kind and so conscientious and so helpful to my wife and to all of us. And they transported her, and everything went so well, I can't tell you how proud I am of Spanish Fork's first responders. And you guys have been the champions of that, of getting those things done as city council and mayor and staff. But I know it didn't start with you guys. Spanish Fork has been at the lead of those kinds of things for a long time, and Station 62 doesn't happen in one year, it has to be planned and everything else. And we had Chief Hanks there as well that day, and everybody's concern and kindness and all of the care that they showed for us was just exemplary. And I'd like to tell everybody, all of the residents of Spanish Fork, that it's an honor to be a citizen of Spanish Fork, where we have a mayor and council and all of the staff that actually care about the citizens of Spanish Fork and care about the things that make life better here. It's one of the big reasons that people flock to Spanish Fork and come here to live is because we have that spirit of helping one another. And so I just want to thank the city council, the mayor, and the staff, but especially our first responders, what great people they are. And when you see them, thank them, thank them for their service. They're doing things that nobody else wants to do. Nobody likes to see the lights in your rearview mirror, and nobody likes to see smoke coming from their neighbor's house, and nobody likes to see the ambulance stop at your house. But if you need them, they're the best thing you could ever see. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. It's Ed. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Emily Peterson. I am speaking today because I believe I deserve a public apology from Mayor Mendenhall and Brendan Gordon. I deserve an apology and the other referendum sponsors and volunteers for things that have been said about us or insinuated about us, that somehow we weren't reading the packets we were given, and we weren't somehow allowed to be confused when differing emails have In one meeting, the mayor mentioned that you wouldn't want, they didn't want any clapping or things of that nature because they wouldn't want citizens to feel afraid to come and speak in front of the city council. How does it make a citizen or citizens feel when they come to city council and they're spoken rudely about, disversions are made against them and their efforts in the community? So I believe I deserve a public apology, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one out in the...okay, that'll take us to item number five, council comments. We'll start on this end. Yep, and we'll go all the way down here.
Perfect. Thank you, mayor. We'll start with the Chamber of Commerce comments. I'll turn some time over to Kathleen Levitt.
Thank you, Kevin, mayor council. So the main thing on, oh, do I need to say my name, Kathleen Levitt, or did he say? All right, perfect. Thanks, Kevin. I don't think I ever say my name. All right, well, so the main thing on the chamber's agenda right now is getting prepared for the winter lights parade, so that is going to be the Saturday after Thanksgiving, the 26th. It will start at 7:00 PM, and we're going to do the same route that we did last year. So it's going to be starting at Cal Ranch and then come down Main Street and then wrap around the park to finish over there. We thought that worked pretty good, so we're hoping to replicate that this year. The chamber has Santa Claus on retainer to light the Christmas lights outside of City Hall on the big tree out there, so it should be super fun. You can register, I mean, anybody that has a business or a family or a school, an organization of any kind can put an entry in the parade, so we welcome anybody that wants to get involved in that to register their entry on the spanishforkchamber.com website. And we had a member ask to share its precision vision here in Spanish Fork. They are doing a Thanksgiving charity event. They are doing free glasses and eye exams for those in need. It's going to be November 30th from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So if you guys know anybody who would, you know, qualify for that, there's a few qualifications. Yeah, they have to be at or below the national poverty line, and they can't have participated in it previous years, but other than that, I welcome anybody that needs, you know, some eye care and some free eyeglasses to take advantage of that, that's with precision vision here in Spanish Fork. And that's all I've got. Thanks, you guys.
Is that who they would contact, Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay.
So I do have a phone number, but they can actually contact the Chamber of Commerce as well, and we can get them connected to that also.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the next thing for me, one of my favorite things that comes with being on city council is having the opportunity to meet with youth groups and talk to kids at schools and other organizations. And this last week, I had that opportunity twice. Once, we had a young group of girls from my neighborhood that came down, their leaders brought them down, and they wanted to do a tour of City Hall and asked a ton of questions. I asked, who wants to sit in the mayor's chair? Obviously, they all raised their hands, they wanted to be up front. Took them around, introduced them to the different departments, explained what the city does, what each of the departments do within the city, and it was really, really a great event. The other one, we went to the Diamond Fork Middle School, a few of us did, and we had the chance to talk to a few seventh grade classes there, and they had a million questions. And my favorite one was a little girl in the back raised her hand and says, I've got a question, says, go ahead, she says, is the mayor nice? I lied and said he's the nicest guy you'll ever meet. No, I said, of course, the mayor's nice, he's one of the best we've got. But thought that was, thought that was a really fun question, but great, great opportunity to meet with youth and to see how engaged and how involved they are, and I love that the school provides that opportunity for them. I think next week or the week after, they're giving some of them a chance to do a field trip to go up to the state capitol, which is always, always a great thing, but anyways, that's all I had. Thank you, mayor.
Thanks, Councilman Argyle. Councilwoman Beck.
The first thing I want to just let the public know is that yesterday, we had a groundbreaking ceremony for the new SFCN building, and that will be down by the police station and Justice Center on Center Street. Hogan Construction has that contract, we've worked with Blaylock and Partners on the architecture. It's going to be a beautiful building, and we expect that to be done early 2024. So this is just a really great place to be, two decades of previous council and mayors and staff working hard to make SFCN what it is, fiber to the home, just a communication center that I think is just an incredible thing we have here in Spanish Fork. So that is with, that's with SFCN. For Fiesta Days, we, a couple of us on our committee, went and extended the invitation to Wayne and Melanie Anderson to be next year's grand marshals, and they were obviously super thrilled. I think it's, it's one of the biggest privileges I have is to go in and talk, invite people to be the grand marshal, because these people have given years and years, if not decades of service to the community. And I know when they know we're coming, they're assuming we're going to be asking something of us, and they still let us in their door. And they're so relieved and excited when it's to be honored. It's the last thing they expect, and Wayne and Melanie were super gracious and are excited to be the 2023 Fiesta Days grand marshals. And then today, we had an annual banquet with our Public Works Department, and there were a couple of things I learned, and so I thought I would share this with you. Spanish Fork City has the third lowest utility bill in Utah County. On 8th North and 4th East, there's going to be a new light come 2023. So that thoroughfare going to Costco, that's the way I go. So 4th East, 800 North, next year, there'll be a light as well as Center Street and 630 West, so right where we just had that groundbreaking ceremony. And then the other thing I liked what they did is they had Innovators of the Year. This was the first year you guys did that, right? And it was super cool because we were standing up front, and you could see people's surprise on their face when they were called up. And even when they were called up, they still didn't realize what they had done, and Chris Thompson would recognize them and give them just a big, what, big kudos, a big appreciation. They also got a gift card. Some of them have saved the city $5 million with grants, just really have been a guiding force. They're not just an employee, they don't just check in at eight and go home at five, they're checking in and really seeing what difference they can make. And I think that's super cool, and I hope you guys continue that. So we have a great Public Works Department. It was fun to be there today and see all of the things that they've done and the recognition that they deserve, so thanks, Chris. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, mayor. Councilwoman Beck mentioned it was interesting because one of the gentlemen that got one of the awards, I mean, he came up with a great idea, and he was shocked that he was getting a reward, but he was getting kudos for actually coming up with the idea to hook the sprinkler system into our pressurized irrigation system. It's like, sometimes we don't have all the answers as engineers, right? And he put something forth, and so I just appreciate Chris giving that props. To Public Works, it was wonderful time spent with the Public Works Department today. Sorry I missed the ribbon cutting groundbreaking yesterday, I was at a meeting in Salt Lake for New Era, our garbage meeting with a lot of different garbage districts throughout the state of Utah. We passed our budget for 2023, which will start in January, just over $5 million budget for '23. Things continue to go well out at our shared Bayview landfill on the west side of Utah Lake, and the shared project that we're currently working on, the gas-to-energy project, is going very well. We also share a safety officer, and that's been a great add. He keeps us OSHA compliant, and we share that between our Springville transfer station, our landfill at Bayview, and North Point over in Lyndon, so that's very good. We appointed new officers for that, and it's looking as though I will, as a new role as a county commissioner, be over at the North Point Transfer Station, and so I was appointed chairman again, mayor, so of the New Era Board. So that was kind of fun to keep going.
You can take the guy out of garbage, but you can't take garbage out of...
That's a fair statement. I like it, I like it. And speaking of that, a few photos that I wanted to share were of our new transfer station construction. You don't see a lot, but we have a very thick, what's called a push wall, and it's basically a concrete wall that you'll put up and push all of the garbage against as, you know, as the loaders push it against it, and then we put it into a compactor, and that's the system we use. Not all transfer stations use that, but in our Springville transfer station, it's been successful, helps us get more garbage on the trains and out to the landfill. So kind of exciting to see that progress happen with newer technology, as our old transfer station in Springville has obviously seen its last days. Mayor, I sent you a letter of resignation. Was not the easiest thing, but of course, the election was last week, and even though I just squeaked it out, it was tough the next day to send a letter of resignation to Mayor Mendenhall, letting him know that my last meeting will be in December, so I'm sure staff will let people know what the process is of filling my vacant seat in December. And I always put my cellphone out there, I would just would let any citizen know, my cellphone is 801-369-5001, and we can talk anytime about any... about any issues that you have or want to talk about within our city. I throw that out to anybody that wants to chat about anything that, that goes on. I get texts all the time and people are like, wait, is this a burner phone? No, it's real. And I make myself very available. That is my real day-to-day phone. And, and, and so if you ever want to talk about anything, please let me know. I'll throw that out to anybody that's within earshot. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Gordon. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd also like to express I have the opportunity to, so for the last several years, we, Mr. Evans has invited us up to Diamond Fork School to talk to his sixth and seventh graders. They always have some really interesting questions. I always think, of all things I've thought about when I was in school, the last I wanted to hear is an old councilman come and talk about city events and things. But the thing that was funny of me, they knew the new stores and things because usually they ask us first thing, what's the new stores? They already knew them, so they're more, paying more attention than I thought. The neat thing that happened that day, so it was Veterans Day. And they, right before they started, they played a video, just a short little two-minute video of a veteran taking his young boys to a program. And just the importance that he had an opportunity to teach those kids about the importance of our veterans that have served, have passed away and are serving now. And what an important message. And the other thing, Diamond Fork has values and they have them posted on every corner of the values and their virtue and honesty, integrity. And what an awesome thing to see that because we hear every day of things going on in this country. But then to go to this school and see this school is teaching values to our children here in, here in the community. And, and remembering Veterans Day so important to me because I have lots of veterans in my family and I was glad to be a part of that. I did have one question that I couldn't answer. Where's Brian at? Alta, one of the girls in the class, come up to me after, and I'm not sure that this, and she says, you guys have got to fix, Alexa only plays iHeartRadio. I went home because I have Alexa and I asked her to play a whole bunch. She played the different stations, but she says, it only plays iHeart and you need to fix that. Brian, it's on you. That was an interesting one, but they always have some, okay. They always have some really good questions. Also would like to thank Spanish Fork. We had an opportunity to exercise one of the most important things and that is vote on our representatives. I drove by the senior center a couple of times. It was pretty busy all day long. A lot of people vote. At the end of the night and tomorrow or yet, the next day, I, I just want to encourage us that even when we're in an election and we win, we need to be gracious losers also. And I think we're going to just have just a few minutes and we're going to go right into 2024 because I think some of us, we get tired of all the stuff that goes on. But be proud to be an American because that's what we do. We kind of hopefully argue and argue and then come out with the best plan for America. And the opportunity to vote is so important because that's who represents these people up here. And it's not an easy process and Brandon will tell you, it's not an easy process to go through, but it has very, been very rewarding for me to be here and be a part of that. Thank you for casting your ballot and, and doing the right thing as, as a citizen of this community and a citizen of the state and a citizen of America and being an American, that's so important. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Thanks for all those, those important items mentioned by all the, again, all the, the meetings and, and things that all of you council people are over, are super important to the city and our area as a region. A few items that, for my comments, I sent Mr. Nick Porter. This, I don't expect you to see it from where I'm holding it, but Representative Stephen White is one of our state representatives in Spanish Fork. His district covers east of Highway Six, all the way into Mapleton. He lives in Mapleton and all of Mapleton and then into Springville as well. So he's my representative of where I live. The other one on the other side of town is Representative Jefferson Burton. The relationship that, that we have with both of these leaders of our state is second to none, I think. We, we speak with them often, working with them, especially as it, as it comes up to a legislative session after the holidays. But I really appreciate Representative White, the town halls, he's already hosted. He's done that in all different, I think he does one in Mapleton, Springville and Spanish Fork. This is the one in Spanish Fork, happening tomorrow night from seven to eight PM. House District sixty-three. UDOT will be there, the, the, the region director, to, to give updates on current transportation projects and future projects. So this is a question that we're, we're always asked at the city level and we're talking about constantly, but an overused phrase of where the rubber meets the road is, is really when we're talking about state funding for these issues. And that's something that Representative White is, is all in about. So sure appreciate him, his good leadership, his friendship and his partnership in these issues that affect us in Spanish Fork, but also the state as a whole. So if you can make it, please come down here at, at seven PM, right here in this room, correct? And Representative White will, will be here. One of the nicest guys, I think, that we've, we've all had the chance to, to work with. Second picture, I sent Nick, Councilwoman Beck, I snapped this picture of her yesterday as she was speaking at our event. She didn't know it, did you?
No, I didn't.
Snuck that picture.
I know.
It was cold, it was cold and she is a smart politician and then when it's, when it's cold, let's go quick, which is not usually a politician's way.
I think that's why I was asked to conduct instead of Mendenhall.
Certainly not my way. So we're thankful she, she did that, but thankful for her role in this exciting new construction of a building that will be a hallmark of Spanish Fork, of, of a great feature of, of living here in town. But Councilwoman Beck has not only taken the lead on, on helping design and make sure that our voice as elected representatives are, are heard in those meetings. And there have been a lot of meetings. You've met quite a few times and stuff, but she's also just a great communicator. She, she, you've seen her on Studio Chatter, you've seen her a lot over the years on productions of our community network. And, and she's just a great asset to have in the community, but we're lucky to have you on the council too.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. That struck me when, when you were speaking of, of how lucky we are to have you here. So Brandon Gordon, you know, you could say we're lucky to have him too. One could say that. And we will say that. Seth is going to spell out some, some timelines with this, but I wanted to, to read this, this resignation letter that we received from, from Councilman Gordon just last week. You'll notice the heartfelt nature of it, just like the, the big-hearted guy he is and, and how much, how much we're going to miss him. So I'm just going to quickly read it. It's, it's just a couple of paragraphs. It says, Dear Mayor Mendenhall, please accept this letter as formal notification that I am resigning from my position as city councilman for Spanish Fork City. My last meeting will be December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you so much for the support from the other elected officials and staff as I take on the new role as Utah County Commissioner. I've kept it no secret that some of my favorite responsibilities have been involved with the garbage district. I think it's because we are regionally joined with our neighboring cities. As our city borders fall down, in this effort, we will help each other to take care of an important utility in South Utah County. My love for what public safety does to keep us safe and show up on our worst days has also been one of my interests. I will take that, I will take what I've learned as a city councilman throughout my personal work career and as a county commissioner, where the experiences will no doubt make me better prepared for what's to come. During my last month, I'll do everything possible to wrap up my duties as a councilman and train any other, other people on, on the boards I have served or on my current responsibilities. It is so important to me to see the progress of this great city continue. I have ever, I have ever bit, every bit of confidence in staff, the existing council, and of course, you as mayor, that you will continue guiding the ship, making Spanish Fork the greatest city in the world. Thank you for the experiences, the laughs, and most importantly, the friendships. I'll sign off here like I like signing Spanish Fork yearbooks in the eighties. Stay cool, see you at the ballpark this summer and remember, the more you weigh, the harder you are to kidnap. Stay safe, eat cake. Gordo. So, of course, in Gordo fashion, he, he takes a heartfelt letter and, and takes a stab at humor at, at the ending of it. But we're going to talk more about him in our, our next meeting, our December thirteenth meeting. We only have one council meeting in December and, and so we'll, we'll eulogize or roast you or some combination of it then. But with this letter, I think I speak for the council and in that, we know that was a tough one to write and it was a tough one to accept from, from your friends, your colleagues and, and, and everybody, everyone else in the city. It's, it wasn't an easy thing to have Councilman Scobes leave and, and go to, to, to serve in, in Washington DC. But we got Councilman Marshall out of it and, and it was a good thing. Same's going to be with you. We're going to get someone.
Better.
Good, probably better, yeah, probably better. But we're going to get somebody out of it that will wonder what we did without him. But, but you will definitely leave your mark here in Spanish Fork and thankful you're not, you're not going too far. So we'll have more on that. Seth, oh, it's up, it's up here? Oh, Tara, yes, thank you. Tara will outline, for those that might be interested, of the timeline of some of the dates that will be here before you know it about applying for Councilman Gordon's position.
Yes, we want to make sure that we get all the information out there, right? We want everybody to be able to apply if they'd want to. So that notice is going to go out tomorrow and then you can actually apply. You need to come into my office, that's here in this building, room one thirty. And you will fill out an application and you need to sign in front of the city recorder. We need to record that and we need to timestamp it so that we know that you're there during the time that the application is open. And that time is December first through December seventh. And so you can come in during business hours, that's eight to five PM, and you can apply. You also can attach with your application, so bring that with you. That would be a one-page statement of things that you'd want the city council to know about you, maybe your experiences, maybe kind of a resume-type document, anything to let the council know, the things that you've done in the past would be helpful, I'm sure. And then the end of that due date would be December seventh at five PM. I can't extend that date. It has to close at five PM, so don't wait till the last minute. And then we will have a special meeting. Obviously, we'll have our city council with the last time that Councilman Gordon's with us. And then the very next day, we'll have a special meeting and that's going to be December fourteenth. That will be at three thirty. If you're going to apply, you have to be here for that meeting. You will be interviewed by the council and then the council will vote right there and let everybody know who they voted for. And fun fact, if, if there's a tie, for whatever reason, then we get out a deck of cards. That's what state code says. It's, it can't be opened. And they have different ways that we can do that, but that's what Spanish Fork City has decided to do. So hopefully, we don't have that, but if we do, we're ready. So any more questions?
We've got the deck of cards.
We've got it, we've got it.
Does Mayor get a vote on that one?
Yes.
Hey, so there shouldn't, well, I guess there could be.
Gets to vote regardless or if, if there's a tie, I get to vote?
Oh.
But if somebody didn't vote or somebody wasn't here and my vote ended and made it be a tie, then it would go deck of cards.
Yes.
It's going to be fun to watch on TV.
Yes. Thank you, Tara. Any other questions for Tara about this? Any questions, Tara? Can the public reach out?
Sure.
To you, shoot you an email, text, anything like that?
Yeah, t silver at Spanish Fork dot org or you can call me at eight oh one eight zero four four five three zero.
So that notice will go out. It'll have all the information that Tara just, just briefed you on. And it'll also have the regulate, or the rules, that's not right, the law that states what it, what the requirements are for you to be a council member, right? Not just anybody, you have to be a resident of the town, certain timeframe, I think it's a year and things like that. So typical rules of candidacy apply there and that'll be posted on our website and a few other places for people.
So that's a seat that, that if he wasn't vacating, it'd finish out the year and run for reelection or do whatever.
Yeah, very good point, or very good, yeah, very good point. They will finish the term and so they, this.
Goes to the end of twenty-three.
Effectively be for a year. And then if that individual wanted to run again, they could in November or, you know, they just could serve the year as well.
Perfect. Okay, polish up your resumes, get ready and, and come, come, come before the council and, and apply for that position if you're so inclined. Mr. Chandler and Mr. Evans up at Diamond Fork Junior High School, Councilwoman Beck, did you, no, not this time, you've been every other time. Councilman Oiler, Councilman Argyle. And myself got to, to speak to them. Councilman Oiler touched on this, but it really is one of the, one of the good parts of this, if you're looking for good parts of, of serving in the city, getting to go up to the, the junior highs and elementary schools and, and talk to kids and ask them what they like about their community and ask them what, what you, what maybe could, could be better. And the feedback is, is good. Feedback is funny sometimes, but, but they have great ideas and so do their teachers. And so publicly, thank you to, to Mr. Chandler, Mr. Evans. They are crossing guards, crossing kids over Center Street and right now, that's not the funnest job to do at, at seven thirty in the morning with the wind blowing up there. But, but they're, they're teaching kids as well and, and we thank them for, for always, always inviting us every single year to come talk to their, what do they teach? Is it US history that we're?
US Studies.
US Studies. So good kids, good teachers and, and a good school up there. And in that vein, we talk about politics in those classes. They're asking about politics and, and these teachers are teaching them about politics. So great point by Councilman Argyle of the political season that, that just came and went and, and our, our right to vote, our blessing to vote, if you will, in this country. In that vein, you know, you start to see politics, I guess, nationally devolve a little bit and, and maybe not be as respectful as, as, as sometimes would like or something like that. So yeah, in, in that vein, Ms. Peterson, if, if, or yes, Ms. Peterson, if there's anything I've ever said to, to make you feel any less important than a citizen in Spanish Fork, I'm truly sorry. Anybody else in, in town, if you're a resident and I want you to make, make sure you feel the love for this city and this community as much as I do, as much as these people do. Your, your opinions, your thoughts, your statements, your, your insights are not only valued, they are needed. Please feel, feel welcome and come and discuss, debate respectfully and, and talk about all the issues in the city because in the end, discussing them and debating them gets to a, a better, a better product in the end for our city. So anybody out there that would ever feel marginalized by anything I've said, truly, I'm sorry from, from the bottom of my heart. That's not the community we live in and, and we're a community of friends and families and neighbors. And this, this place is open to you. This is, this is your place and we're excited in a few months to make it an even bigger place so more people can, can be involved in, in everything that they want to do in, in talking to their government. So with that, anything else that anybody wants to talk about council comments? That takes us to Spanish Fork one oh one. I think Emily Harriman, who does very well for the city in a lot of aspects, but this is a big part of the job, is. part of the job, is the Festival of Lights.
Yes, thank you for inviting me to come speak about Festival of Lights. Um, you've probably seen our new billboard up along the freeway. Um, so, some people are asking, well, why did you change the billboard? We are celebrating thirty years of Festival of Lights. So we're really excited about that. We have some new branding, as you can see. Um, we also have some other changes, so we did, um, increase the cost for Festival Lights. You guys all know, cost of everything else is going up. It also impacts the setup and the operations of Festival Lights. Um, it is now gonna be ten dollars for a single-family vehicle, twenty-five for a commercial van or a vehicle towing a trailer, and fifty dollars for a bus. Uh, we have buses on our list, which a lot of other cities and groups don't have, but we get a lot of commercial buses with sixty-plus passengers that come through our event, and we've actually built our event to accommodate those big ba, buses, and even big motorhomes. So that part is really neat, what we do for Festival of Lights. Um, the event opens up on Thanksgiving and, um, ends on December first. It is open nightly from six to, thank you, thank you, and it is open, so it goes from Thanksgiving Day to New Year's Day. Um, and it, we are open nightly from six to ten PM. Um, a lot of people love coming through and doing our second drive-through. Uh, just be aware that the second drive-through occurs after Christmas. Uh, several years ago, we did have it before Christmas and after Christmas, uh, but with our numbers of vehicles coming through, it now takes place from December twenty-sixth, uh, through January first. Um, we do have here at the city office and at the Parks and Rec office where you can get gift certificates and punch passes. We also offer on our website, uh, Spanishfork.org slash F O L, uh, where you can get group sales tickets. We have a lot of companies here in Spanish Fork and the surrounding areas who purchase tickets ahead of time for their employees. Um, another change for this year that you guys will see, that will be the most notable, is we have, um, found the need to change the traffic pattern to lining up for Festival Lights. In the past, you would see a lot of vehicles that would come off of US six and Canyon Road and merge there at the intersection, and then wrap around on US six down to Powerhouse Road. Well, there have been some changes that have occurred to that intersection of Powerhouse Road and US six. Uh, one major change that is a safety concern is our very wide turn lane that we used to have is no longer there. Um, that road now on US six goes through both lanes, go travel all the way up into the canyon with the right lane being dedicated for trucks. Uh, if you see, when you drive up there, it encourages trucks to use the right lane. So the new route that we would like to encourage residents to use is either coming up Canyon Road, or if you're coming off of US six to turn there by the Walmart grocery store and go through the roundabout to Canyon Road. And then, uh, when you get down further on Canyon Road, uh, you will be going to thirty-four fifty East to River Bottoms Road, and then onto Powerhouse Road. Um, if you can also see on the map, there's red, uh, we have, uh, received permission from UDOT to have no parking on the south side of Canyon Road through that entire area. Uh, we know there are some sub, subdivisions that they park their vehicles out there. You can't park on the side, south side of the road, as that's where vehicles will be queuing up to line up, but you can still park on the north side of the road. So we'd like to encourage residents who live in that area to park on the north side of the road. Um, we will have a lot of signs. You're gonna see a lot of signs throughout the area directing people. We do expect it to take some time, uh, for people to learn the new route, because for thirty years, they've been used to going on US six. We do ask that people be patient. Um, there will be a lot of people from out of town who are not gonna be aware of this change. We're gonna do the best we can to advertise it through social media and signage, but please be patient as you may think other people are cutting you off, but they don't know what you guys know. Um, we will send out a notification to all the residents in the area that will be impacted, including all the residents of Spanish Fork, so that they are aware, uh, we will be utilizing the Everbridge system.
Lots of road rage coming up.
Yes.
Just saying, some people have road rage.
Some people.
Some people.
At the Christmas.
At Christmas.
Just smile and let them in. It's okay.
Smile and wave.
Yes.
Or a product of our own success that we're having to, to do this for how many people that come from all over the place, right?
Yes.
I would say if you get waiting too long in the line, the, uh, the cheat code is, I don't know if I'm gonna give that out here. I enjoy the cheat code, but, you know, that, that, that road that, up above, before you drop down to River Bottoms Road, you could almost go in that neighborhood looking over and, uh, and see some really, right, Mike? You can, I mean, you don't have to leave your house to see it, but if you stay on Canyon Crest Drive and you don't wanna wait anymore, you can see the lights, uh, from afar there.
Well, you could do that, but then you wouldn't see the two new features that we have in the park this year to celebrate our thirtieth year.
She's got a point.
And I can't say what those features are. You'll have to go through. It's worth it.
There's a teaser right there.
I like that.
Very good, Emily.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the, the electrical department, too. Uh, thank you, Janice, for the good work up there. Uh, speaking of cold people, uh, in the winter, that's pretty cold for you standing out there collecting everybody's money and keeping them straight. So thank you, Janice, for that.
And she does a great job doing that with a smile. She's always fun to see there. I, I wanted to share something. Back in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, uh, we had some sixteen to seventeen thousand vehicles that went through the Festival of Lights, which sounds like a big number, especially when I say it like that. But in twenty twenty, that number went to twenty-two thousand, and in twenty-one, uh, it dropped down wonderfully, thankfully, to twenty thousand three hundred. Uh, and, and so just in the last couple of years, we've started to see that back up on Highway six, like, if some, somebody in this room's probably seen it with me, it, it won't be this, we won't need to use all of that route every night. Um, and chances are, most nights, it won't, it won't go too far off of, of Bottoms Road. I hear some snickering over there. Um, but, uh, yeah, we, it, it is a product of, of, it's pretty cool. Um, and COVID absolutely blew this up, right, in terms of, let's find some new things to do and get out. So we'll see how this goes, and, and it'll take a little bit of, not just mapping, signing, like Emily said, but there'll be a few people out there helping, helping to maybe tone down that road rage, so we can all have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah. So the Canyon Road, you'll, you'll be able to be to the right of that in line, and people will still be able to go on Canyon Road headed east. Yeah, that's the idea.
Mayor.
Yes. Come, come on, come, come tell us in the mic.
Sorry, Janice.
Come on, Janice.
You gotta, you gotta come up to the mic.
This is, this is good stuff. We need to hear this.
We have timed the booth, and if people have their lights on, their radio on, and their money ready, we can get five cars in a minute.
So be prepared.
So people be prepared-
Yeah.
And turn, it used to be six before credit cards. If you turn your lights on, have your radio station ready, and have your money ready, that line will go a lot quicker.
So come, come about, when you pass the golf course, let's be ready to go. Let's get the money out.
Emily's done really well on posting signs that say the price, say, turn your lights off, and it, turning your lights off in line actually make it, uh, safer for the people exiting the park.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's from the booth.
Perfect.
And now it's ten dollars, so we're not giving out two dollars in change anymore. Maybe we, maybe we can get seven.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you, Janice. Thanks, Emily. Thanks to the whole team that, uh, that puts that on and makes a great event for the holidays. Appreciate it. Okay, anything else on Festival of Lights? If not, we'll go to item seven, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon and seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call, vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to item number eight, the public hearing for tonight, is ordinance Title fifteen amendments. This proposal involves various amendments to municipal code regarding Title fifteen land use. Mr. David G. Anderson.
It's not his middle initial.
Is it? G? See?
How'd you know that?
How on earth did you know that?
I know things.
Wow.
Scary.
I'm the mayor.
Okay.
Geronimo. So, here we go. There are a handful of different things that the proposed amendments tonight cover. Really, only one of the subjects is new, so if I can maybe start with that, and I'm just gonna kinda give a high-level overview, and then answer any questions that you might have of me. We have ran into a few different situations over the course of the past few years that have, uh, helped us come to realize that we need more explicit guidance in the ordinance for how to deal with properties. Typically, they're properties that are being put to some new use, where the previous use has had, um, maybe, for example, just something like a gas station, and somebody wants to go from having a gas station on a site to putting an office building on it or something like that. Um, maybe the real example that I would use is the Fritzi Building, where there'd been an industrial use there for a long, long time, and about this time last year, you approved, a new development that will eventually lead to that really big building down on the southern end of town, coming down and having that replaced with a lot of homes. There are all kinds of different industry standards and regulations that are intended to help make sure that that process happens in such a way that, uh, anybody that lives on that property, works on that property, or anything like that well into the future, is protected from maybe any of the contamination or that type of thing that might have occurred with the previous use. The regulations that we're hoping that you adopt into Title fifteen relative to that are simply intended to help make sure that that happens, that best practices are followed, that, um, frankly, much of what we're already doing today is simply codified in the ordinance to make it clear and a little bit more defensible for us to make requests of applicants and developers and anybody that would, would potentially go through that process. Um, I'm referring to the, the memo that we, we titled Title fifteen amendment environmental concerns, and the different language, um, sorry, the language that we have in that memo that, uh, start to finish, that entire section would be a new addition to Title fifteen. Um, Lance Hess is a consultant that we've worked with for many, many years. We rely heavily on him as our expert when it comes to any issues like this. Lance was the original author of What's Before You Tonight. We, as city staff, have digested what Lance gave us originally, uh, working with our legal folks, engineering, uh, community development, uh, different departments, um, to kinda refine, to a degree, what Lance gave us and what you have tonight is the result of that. I guess, have any questions about that part of things before?
Okay.
Just how much of it's from, say, a state level versus just Lance writing it, if, if you will? You know, how, how similar is this going to be in Springville or Provo?
That's a great question. I honestly don't know.
Okay.
Oftentimes, it's common for us, when we're dealing with some other issue, like, if I were leading out on it, you could say plagiarize. I mean, I, we do, we, we, we rely heavily on experiences that other communities have had, approaches that they've taken to dealing with problems, different situations, um, and, uh, usually trying to, to follow successful models as we create our own procedures and regulations and that type of a thing. Um, that'd be a great question for Lance. I'd be happy to, to ask that of him, just exactly, where did he start with this? Um, it's formatted, you know, in such a way to fit in with, uh, the format of the rest of our ordinance, um, and to kinda spell out, uh, exactly what, what should be expected of people as they go through the development process. Um, if things are discovered at one step along the way, then you would go, you know, maybe through a different channel at that point, um, almost a user manual, you know, kind of a format, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks.
That was the hard one. This is great. Okay, so, Title fifteen amendments, uh, I'll talk about, uh, one of the other memos that we sent, Title fifteen amendments, annexation slash process. This is really not intended to change anything that I think is consequential, but rather to, um, clarify some things about our current process, to, um, update some of the language in our code to better match, um, some of the things that we require of people today, given that, for example, today, um, we require things to be submitted digitally instead of via hard copy and that type of a thing. Uh, also addressing, um, the idea that, uh, increasingly, we're relying on a processed annexed property that's not just by petition, but also resolution, and, um, touching on an addressing issue by way of simply opening up a door for somebody perhaps to keep their existing address, county address as they're annexed into the city. Not exciting, but we think they're helpful changes there. Any questions about any of that? The last one for me is the easiest, master plan developments. Um, we, as staff, feel like this is an appropriate time, simply to reinforce the idea that, um, as a particular tool for having a development entitled, an applicant receiving approval for a master plan development ultimately is entirely up to you as the city council. So tried, excuse me, we have tried to reinforce language that I actually thought was, was somewhat clear before, but, um, I really appreciate the idea that, that we would strengthen the language that we have in the code to make that even more clear. That's the main reason for the change. Also, uh, we've left, through previous modifications that we've made, a reference to private streets, which we haven't allowed in the city for quite some time, so you'll see that's struck out as well, and that's what, uh, what's proposed to be changed there. And that's all that we have before you tonight, just those three kinda different areas of subject matter. Uh, the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have both reviewed all of those changes and have recommended that they be approved.
Perfect.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
We'll, uh, we might have some more questions, uh, for you after the public hearing. If there's no questions now, I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing for this item. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, to go into public hearing. Uh, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We are in public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to, uh, item eight A, Title fifteen amendments, dealing with master plan developments, environmental concerns, and annexations? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gordon to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Out of public hearing, discussion back up here. Master plan developments, environmental concerns, and annexations. Any questions for Dave or anybody else about any of those items? I will say, watch the, appreciate, again, the, the planning commission's discussion and, and debate and going over these items, uh, as, as I saw the minutes and, and watched a little bit of that meeting, that some good, uh, cleanup stuff, but some good, some good solid changes, too, to update that, is my opinion. No other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to-
Nope, Chad, you go ahead.
Motion to approve ordinance Title fifteen amendments. Proposal involves various amendments to municipal code regarding Title five, Title fifteen land use.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
That's approved. Item eight A is approved. Takes us to nine A, uh, Modera Master Plan Development Request to amend approval.
Once again, from Mayor, thank you. This request is really pretty straightforward. It has to do with a, uh, large development that you approved in May, um, where, uh, a portion of the project, two hundred and twenty-eight homes out of a total of six hundred and sixty-eight, with a condition that you imposed today, would be required to be owner-occupied. So it's a hundred and fourteen homes in all. So it's 114 homes in all in the development. Some of you might recall that the idea of requiring a certain percentage of homes in a residential development to be owner occupied, that's been commonplace for you. In recent years, as we went through the development review process initially, the applicants didn't have any concern with that, at least not that they expressed to us, but have since made this request. That particular condition, it's condition number four, be modified so that 100% of the 668 homes in the Modera project could be constructed inconceivably. None of them would be occupied. None of them would be owned by the occupants of the unit, maybe is a better word to say. The Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both have reviewed this proposal. The request to change that condition, the Development Review Committee unanimously recommended that the proposal be denied. The Planning Commission also recommended that it be denied by a 4-1 vote. And that's all that I have, but of course, be happy to answer any questions that you have of me.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave on this item? Nothing?
Are we gonna allow them to give a reason?
We can. Wait, it's not a public hearing, but the applicant, if you'd like to ask the applicant a question, the applicant's here.
I would like to.
Sure. We'll get your name, sorry.
My name is Clint Garner. I'm the applicant.
So your reason for condition was approved, now you want that to just completely go away?
Yes.
And why?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to echo Mr. Mendenhall's gratitude for you guys, for what you do. You're public servants, and we appreciate it. My sister-in-law's our lieutenant governor, and I see the amount of time and effort that you guys put into your jobs, and we really do truly appreciate what you do. To answer your question as to the reason why, really, it's pretty simple and straightforward. As we have started this project, it's taken approximately three years to get through it. At the time when we started, the economy was different. Owner-occupied units were more easily sold and more affordable. Right now, for somebody to purchase a condo that would be in this development about that size, we see some up by the neighborhood Walmart, they're going for around $300,000, which equates to around a $2,500 a month payment if they get a FHA loan with 3% down. If you look at the rental option, if these people or if these units were turned into rentals, it becomes much more affordable because the owner of the project is required to put down a minimum of 25%, making it much more doable to have an affordable, more affordable rent. Those rents on the market right now would probably be around $1,500, saving somebody $1,000 a month. When we have a huge affordability crisis, it makes it difficult for people to own. We'd like to have that option to have them be able to rent. As well as for us, we've gone out and seeked funding for this project, and many of the financial institutions and people that we've discussed this with have basically said if there's an owner occupancy requirement, that they would not provide any funding for the project. And so, that's where we're at at this point. It was brought up in Planning Commission that, and I, this was new to me, but that the 50% owner occupied rule, the city doesn't really have any way to control that or implement that rule other than through an HOA through CCNRs. And so, it really pushes it back onto whoever's managing the property through the HOA to implement those requirements, because it was brought up that the city doesn't really have any way to follow up on that. The free market, there is, if we, and we, our intent is to still sell units, but if we can't, I'd like to have the opportunity to rent them out. But if we do sell the homes through FHA requirements, FHA requires 50% owner occupancy, so there already is a condition out there that would control that if we continue to maintain FHA standards. So, so that's an overlying reason for our request and why we're here today.
Thank you, Mr. Garner.
Any other questions for me?
Any questions from up here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Any other questions for Dave or anybody, or any discussion up here on this item?
You wanna go first, or do you want?
Go ahead.
I just think, you know, Chad and I have had conversations about, I mean, even him living in a single-family home, how troublesome it is that when a home is purchased and by not the homeowner, right? We get a better product when families live and engage in the community. Not that our renters are not those people, but I certainly think that that was at least the purpose behind when we approved the original. I do also understand the pickle you're in with financing and that, but I'm not inclined to make a change at this time, especially with recommendation from the DRC and Planning Commission myself. I think we get a better product if we can still push to have that as much as we can be owner occupied, for sure. So, that's just my two cents. Is it?
Thank you. Anybody else?
So Clint, I guess I do have a question for you. So the rental portion of this, would that be managed or purchased by a single entity? Or are you allowing, would it allow for individuals to purchase that and rent them if they wanted to? So even with the 50%?
Individuals could own them and rent them if they...
Come back after the morning.
Sorry, sorry.
So individuals would be able to purchase and rent those as part of that 50%. If somebody does find themselves in the predicament that we're in right now, where interest rates are higher than normal, or what we've seen in the last, you know, few years, people that do own the property would have an option to rent it, whereas otherwise, if they are moved or relocated for a job and that 50% occupancy is already, or rentals are already met, those people would then be in a position where they're forced to sell and wouldn't be able to rent their unit until the market could turn around and make it more reasonable for them not taking a loss. So, yes, individuals could own those units.
Thank you.
For me, I just want, I just wanted to try and say, I know that there's, this was a lot of heated debates back in the springtime when this was brought to us, and I think we, when we finally approved it, it was upon these conditions, so I'm not inclined to change my mind. And I would hope that there will be an HOA down there, right? And so, they'll know what our expectations are as a city. I would think that if we are made aware that the HOA is not following that, then there's, does the city have power to do something?
We'll turn the bond, and we can certainly study that. That is our expectation. We have other HOAs around the community that have the residency requirement, the homeowner occupy that. In those HOAs that I have interacted with, which is two, so I don't wanna, I haven't talked to every HOA, but I've spoken with two through the years. The HOA, the homeowners in the HOA, or in other words, the board members in these two particular HOAs, are really grateful for that requirement that they have. Because it does create the neighborhood and the continuity, I think, that you were mentioning, Councilman Gordon. I can see from his perspective why, you know, why they want that and they want that flexibility. There becomes a little bit of a commodity when one that is rented is now purchased by somebody that wants to buy, but that doesn't happen very often in these two HOAs that I've visited with. Once it hits the rental market, it rarely comes back as a, as a for own, or by owner occupied property. And so, that's the experience from homeowner, from the homeowner's side of the HOA. This would probably be a different HOA where if, if, I don't know if your setup was gonna have two distinct HOAs. I kinda think, I remember it was, the eastern one was gonna have one HOA and the western one would have one. But HOAs are oftentimes governed by, you know, the majority, and so, even if half of it's owned still by the developer or sold to some group that buys the half or whatever, they probably still have control over what direction that makes, that HOA makes. Yeah, I think, I think those are, that's what I know about HOAs right now.
Okay. Thanks.
My personal, my original thought in developments down here was somewhat of the FHA, the first-time home buyer, being able to get into a place like this and maybe, maybe not selling it to get into their next place, or selling it, being able to sell it, or keep it as an investment property and when an income grows or something, and their family grows or something, maybe moving to more of some conventional-looking neighborhoods, single-family neighborhoods in Spanish Fork. That's, I know that's a lot of people's path to that, and real estate can sure be a a part where that helps them build that equity, that wealth to move to it. So that was, I guess, part of my, part of my allure of a development like this, is somebody getting into it when they're young and not having a lot of kids, and maybe their family grows, and maybe they hold on to it, maybe they sell it, whatever, maybe. So, I hope, I hope that still happens in whatever development we get out of here.
I'm gonna be maybe a little bit naive here with what I'm about to say, but I have a little bit of history, and everybody in the stream, I think, shares the same history. You know, in the last 25 years, we had a handful of downturns in the real estate market, and the worst one, starting in '07, '08. But by the time we got to 2010, you know, we had kinda hit the bottom and we're starting to appreciate out of it, right? This is, this is a blip on the radar. It certainly is a tough moment in time, and I'm very aware of what that is, as I'm sure everybody is. But I think as a community, and maybe speaking just for you or from some of the conversations I've had from you, that you're, we're taking a long-term view here, and the approach that we're trying to create, the mix within these developments of higher density that you've spoken about, and this is a new product for us. We don't have any of these, well, that's not true. I think we just have, we just had one where they've started to occupy kind of a small mart, right? And this is our first foray into having this dense of a product. And I think we're acutely aware of the affordability challenges, which is probably the biggest reason why I think you've considered doing this. If you didn't care about the affordability, I think you wouldn't have made changes to the code a handful of years ago to allow this dense of a product in Spanish Fork. And so, looking at, looking at the real estate market, and again, I may be naive. I don't think that I really am that naive when I say this, this will change and the appreciation will come. And, you know, a $300,000 unit for what the interest rates is, as Mr. Garner expressed, you know, I'd love to see them build it and sell it for less. You know, I don't have any idea what their costs are, and I certainly don't get involved in those details. But at the densities that we have, my hope is that you can build it with economies and such, that it's cheaper. Again, it's not my business, it's not ours to get into, but I think that's the, that's the hope and the attempt that we've had kinda through this process.
Seth or Vaughn, can CCNRs be rewritten or changed after the fact or down the road?
Yeah, they can with the amendment of the numbers that are, the CCNRs themselves will have provision about amending and it will require a certain percentage. And so, if they get that percentage, they can rewrite them.
In an instance where we've requested, or the city councils requested that this be a portion or part of the CCNRs, would a change like that need to come back to the city council?
Not legally, no. But if they do that, they breach the development agreement that we have with them. I think our goal in setting up this condition was to have them police that requirement and not for us to be, you know, monitoring exactly how many are owner occupied and how many are not. But it was to put it in the real covenants in their CCNRs.
So if their members, HOA members, decided down the road that they wanted to change it from 50% to 60% to 70%, they could vote on that and they could change that?
Right. But it would breach our development agreement.
And what's the result of that?
There's not very many good remedies that we have in that case, but, you know, it would be a breach of contract. Because at that point, the project could be built out and there's nothing that we can hold on to at that point.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Vaughn, thanks Seth, thanks council members for the questions. Any other questions or comments about this?
So I just want, so that, the fact that you're telling me that you're struggling with financing because there in the development don't want to have owner occupied, that bothers me a little bit because I don't wanna be restricting that. I don't understand why they wouldn't, because in my, affordable housing is something I still can't seem to anybody to identify to me, but a rental is not considered an affordable house. However, it is affordable housing because I can get into it and I can rent it. And I, I understand your problem, but as Brandon said, we went down this road with this project. And I think that, I mean, I think we should hold to it.
Might be a case study that is discussed up at the legislature in a session, and hey, if affordable housing and issues like this are a topic of mind, top of mind at the state, then, you know, what's the, what's the work together from the state's area of helping this out and accomplishing all the things we want to accomplish?
And I'm sure we'll see probably some changes even in this session.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments about this item, I would entertain a motion.
I move to deny the proposed amendment to the preliminary plat approval for the master plan development based on the following findings: That owner occupancy adds an important element when creating a new neighborhood, that opportunities for owner occupancy are very scarce, that the condition is reasonable, only a small percentage of the homes in the development are required to be owner occupied.
Motion, motion made by Councilman Euler with those findings?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gordon with those findings. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
That recommendation to deny passes. Takes us to Item 9B. Hearing and resolution authorizing eminent domain for volunteer drive. Volunteer drive going through Main Street to 100 South, for those watching at home. I'm sure we'll see a map about this at some point.
We're gonna throw a map up on the screen there. Volunteer Drive is an important road in our community. It connects 100 South down to Main Street. A lot of residential traffic. West Park Road ties into it, serves right past the sports park. I think maybe the dugout has as many trips onto that road as any other. But it's, with the growth that we've experienced, it's become imperative to extend Volunteer Drive east of Main Street. So you can see it, right now, it ends at Main Street at a light right there. But there's developments, residential developments to the east there that need to be connected. It's a collector and an arterial in our city. The city's attempted to negotiate the purchase of that right-of-way. We've been partially successful. We've acquired, I mean, if you zoom in just a little bit more, you'll see parcel lines. We've acquired the southern bit of the Perry property to the north, where like the Napa Auto Parts is. You can see that little piece that we've already acquired. But the remainder across the larger parcel, it's owned by Two Pesos LLC. We have not been successful in coming to an agreement as to value. The transaction, I think, is friendly though. We've been negotiating with them. They've not opposed the city's right to acquire it, and they've also already signed a right of entry and occupancy to allow us to get moving on the project. They just want to reserve the single question of what's the value of the property to be taken. So, and by the way, the funds of, the appraised value, the funds have already been deposited with the title company, so we're working together on that. It's what I would call a friendly condemnation or friendly acquisition. It's what I would call a friendly condemnation or friendly acquisition.
Second.
Yeah, it's fr, it's friendly as long as they get paid what they want to get paid. So they, in that agreement that they've signed, they've waived all defenses to the city's right to occupi, or right to acquire. So they're not making any legal arguments. Really, the only issue is the appraised value and what the just compensation should be. Let me think, what else? The state code as a prerequisite to initiating eminent domain requires city council to have a hearing, not a public hearing, but really a hearing for the property owner to come to you and discuss the, the necessity to use eminent domain. After you've had that hearing with the property owner, then you can consider the, the resolution which would authorize the purchase or the acquisition by eminent domain and some further steps like signing that right of occupancy agreement. And that's how that resolution has been drafted. There, there you can see on the screen is kind of the, the diagram, the layout of the road as it goes east from Main Street to, to the, through the Two Peso's property. The blue segment is as it went through the Perry property, but we still need to acquire parcel one in red and parcel three in red. And we've had the appraisal performed on that.
Did we, did we give parcel ladder to the Perrys?
No, that, that would still be owned by Two Peso's. It's their property. The appraisal did address that, you know, leaving such a small fragment of their property and gave them basically severance damages for that, that, because it's cut off from the rest of the whole. So it did address that.
Seth, when have we done this before? Can you remind me? Didn't we do it over by Cinemark?
I don't believe so. I don't think that was, you're talking like with the Hidro property?
There was, that we have done a eminent domain friendly, a friendly one.
Yeah, the only time we've done something like this is when somebody said, hey, if we can go through this process, there's maybe a tax advantage for them. This is distinctly different because there is a dispute in terms of the value. Yeah, so I think in my, my 18 years, this is
This is different.
This is the furthest.
The other one was a tax advantage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had cases where the property owner wanted us to do eminent domain so they could get that 1033 exchange, but allows them more time to reinvest and avoid the capital gains tax.
Is Two Peso's here tonight?
They are certainly where. I sent the required notices, I talked to their attorney about the, about the meeting, but I don't think they're present, no.
Okay. Yeah, and I think with this one again, what's really super important is the level of communication we've had with them. Their attorney's been excellent in terms of responding and participating in those discussions. It's been
Absolutely.
Very professional and, and just a high quality level of discussion, I think.
Yep. Any questions about, this is a box we need to check. It's an opportunity for the property owner. And we've sent required notices and disclosures that have, that is required under the state law as well. And then assuming you adopt the resolution tonight, then we could proceed with eminent domain. If, if we can't work towards a settlement, they're still negotiating, but we would have the authorization, we need to move forward.
What's the timeline process of that, Vaughn?
We've been negotiating for a while, so I don't, I don't know how much longer they want to negotiate that. Really, the parties in interest are some of the neighboring properties, the owners of the residential developments to the east. They're the ones that are putting up the money for, to acquire it. And in that agreement that I mentioned, of the occupancy agreement, if they get to a point of impasse, then they can send me a notice and then at that point, we would, we would initiate the eminent domain action within 15 days. That's how it's written right now. And at that point, the funds that were deposited would then be transferred over to the court so that the city has good faith, you know, making an offer to purchase of appraised value.
Perfect. Thank you Vaughn. Any other questions for Vaughn on this topic?
Just know that this is, this is a good road, an important road to have. The road directly south of that that we can see, coming in that, in and out of that road is not exactly the safest route that we've got in town. So I think having this road installed as an extension of volunteer will, will make things much safer in that area.
What's our speed limit right there, chief?
Thirty.
Thirty? And if they're coming from Salem, they're trying to slow down to 45 and if they're leaving to go to Salem, they're like, let's hurry and get there, let's go 50.
No, you've got that wrong. They go 30 when they go to Salem.
Do they? That's a tough one. It's a tough intersection and, and this is an important connection. Okay, any other questions or comments about this one? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the proposed resolution authorizing the purchase or the initiation and filing of a complaint to exercise the power of eminent domain for the acquisition of property, for the extension of Volunteer Drive east of Main Street based upon the findings listed in the resolution.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler. A roll call vote here. Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
That passes. Go to item 9C, senior center advisory board appointment of Marla, do you know how to say that?
Kill Kelly?
Kill Kelly. Marla Kill Kelly to replace Maureen Rindlesbacher on the senior center advisory board. That needs a motion and a roll call vote.
Motion to approve board appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon, a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you to the service of Maureen Rindlesbacher. Longtime senior center helper there and her, her, I was gonna say her hus, her son, but it's her husband, Mr. Rindlesbacher, driving the bus forever there. So, good people. And Marla Kill Kelly will be great too. Item D, All West TiVo transport agreement with Spanish Fork City, channel sharing agreement, Mr. Brian G. Perry.
G.
That's what we're going with tonight.
Let's go with it. Geronimo, that's right.
Actually, it's grit. Brian, grit.
All right, all right, enjoy that. Hey, council, thanks for giving me a minute tonight. We are super excited about this project. For those that don't know, we are, we are in the process of making some changes to the cable TV system for SFCN. Over the last few years, well, the last five years or so, we've noticed the trend that all of you have noticed, that more and more of those channels are streaming, right? People are, people are watching their content streaming on their devices. That's tough when you have a traditional cable TV system. You're tied to a TV, you're tied to the big screen in the, in the living room or downstairs, wherever you happen to have that coax that's coming into your house. We want to make these changes for our customers. We want to launch an IPTV system. This is a streaming system that will allow our customers to not only watch it on their big screen TV in the living room, but they can watch it on their laptop, they can watch it on their phone, they can watch it wherever they happen to be and have the ability to have a good internet connection and be streaming that content instead of simply tied to a coax coming out of the wall. So one of the, one of the necessary steps to launching a system like this is we have to have a connection to the company. We're using TiVo. TiVo has acquired the Mobi TV streaming platform. So we're, we're partnering with TiVo to build this system. One of the requirements is we have to have a good, solid, dedicated connection to TiVo. They have two data centers in the United States, one on the east coast, one on the west coast. That's an expensive circuit. We don't want to add cost to cable TV. What we're trying to do is make the cost more manageable. One of the things, a few of the things that are actually beneficial about this system, everybody that's renting whole home gateways and DVR boxes because they want to be able to record those shows, that's now all going to be cloud-based. If you record it on one device, you'll be able to watch it back on the other device. You don't have to have a box that you're renting from me with a hard drive in it that could fail and you lose that content years down the road anyway. Those, those kind of cost savings are just going to be built into this platform, but they do come at a trade-off. We have the other costs involved. The channels that we have locally off of the air from Salt Lake, all of the broadcast stations, the ABC, the NBC, everything that's coming off of the big antennas up on the okers that we pay a lot of retransmission consent fees for. Those fees unfortunately don't change, but we have to add equipment on our side that will take those signals and transcode them and send them up to TiVo for them to include in our streaming TV package. Otherwise, those channels wouldn't have the local versions of the ads from Salt Lake City, the ads from Spanish Fork, right? We have to have those local channels encoded and included in that system. That equipment is, is expensive. Those encoders are expensive, they require annual maintenance, the circuit is expensive. So in order to help alleviate some of the cost of this, there are a few other local carriers like us that are part of the National Cable Television Co-op, which is smaller ISPs that have banded together to make this more affordable for its residents, for their customers, right? So what we're proposing is rather than us going this alone, we're going to join a small consortium of these other local operators. Headed by All West, the other operators are CentraCom, Strata and Beehive. So four of these ISPs locally have gone in and they're sharing the cost of that expensive transport circuit and those encoders. They're sharing those costs four ways, which really makes it a little more doable, a little more tolerable when it comes to the price of that, that necessary piece of the puzzle. So what this agreement is that you have before you is us opting into that consortium. We want to pay our fifth and we will share in what they've already got established. We will jump on that bandwagon, so to speak. So, we're excited about that. The contract is just simply us agreeing to pay our fair one-fifth every year to be part of that consortium.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian? I think Chad's got some.
What's our one-fifth?
In the contract here, on the very last page
Okay.
The very last page has the fee of schedule. So there is a one-time fee that will pay our portion of the encoders and that's $6,640. That's a one-time fee. We'll just pay that to help cover the cost of what they've already purchased and is in place. Then our portion of that expensive circuit every year or every month is $1,337.95 and $83 a month is what we will pay to help support and maintain the service agreements on those encoders, should they have problems and need to be replaced.
So if we weren't joining the one-fifth, we'd be paying four or five times what we're seeing right here?
Five times as much would be our cost, yep.
So this won't be a service we offer or it will just allow us to use SFCN's network to do our streaming? Is that what you're telling me?
This is a necessary piece of the puzzle for us to launch the streaming service. We have to have this connection, the transport connection, and we have to have the encoders in order to get our channels onto a streaming platform.
Okay.
All West, CentraCom, Beehive and Strata have already built this system. They're already pulling those channels, they're already sending them to TiVo, so we're going to jump in and play with them and pay our fair share.
What's, how are you gonna cover this? Cost, how are you gonna cover the cost?
The cost covered in this, this is just part of our cable TV fees.
So when the Gordons come back from Fubo TV, I mean, it's, we've talked about that, right? Because essentially, most of your televisions have the ability to download the app or if your television doesn't, you'll have like a Chromecast or a Fuku, Roku, what is that? Roku?
That's right.
And, and then you'll have probably the, will it be our own app or will it be the TiVo app and then we'll find Spanish Fork?
It will be our own branded app. It's built by TiVo, supplied by TiVo. We actually expect to have this app in our hands and be testing it December 6th. That's the, that's the kind of, the ETA date that they've given us for that. So they will build the app. It will be the SFN TV app. It'll be available on the Google Play Store, the Android App Store. It'll be available to download on TVs that support that application for streaming, yep.
So we're just hopping on with these other four?
That's right.
Your text, when this rolls out, will be able to help Councilman Gordon find the SFN TV app, click on it and then scroll through the channels that are included in that, right?
Absolutely. Our preferred device, our preferred device is gonna be the Amazon Fire TV Stick 4K. That is the device, out of all of them that we've tested, that is the one that performs the best. It's gonna give us the best streaming capabilities for this app. So we're gonna have some of those available that we can sell. You can ask us for one, we can just add it to your account. This is also something, if you've already got it, you don't need another piece of hardware. It'll work.
Your smart, if you have a smart TV that can download apps?
If your smart TV can run the app, absolutely. You won't need another piece of hardware. If you want to buy one from, I mean, you've got these on the shelf at Lowe's, right? You can walk into Lowe's and grab one of these fire sticks and there you go. That's all you need. You don't have to buy one from us, you don't have to rent it from us. There is no fee associated with that. Once you own it, it's yours.
Have you tested on the Shield?
The Shield is a listed supported device. We don't have one to test with, but I can certainly look into it if you'd like.
That's what I use, so yeah, I'd be curious.
Okay. It is, it is listed in the list of, of supported devices.
Chad, let, let me also address your question of how are we paying for this? You'll recall maybe six months or a year ago, it's probably a year ago, we decided to stop running coax into new subdivisions. Every subdivision's a little bit different, but there's a savings that was achieved by not running coax into every new development. Some of that, this is, this is a fraction, a small fraction of what we are saving by not running that coax into those subdivisions, but that's one, that's probably the best place where this is coming from in terms of where is that revenue for this ad? This, this will make it so those residents in those new subdivisions where we don't have coax can now access our product that's on that cable, that cable app.
That's right. And there are a number of other savings relating to the plant. I mean, we, we built a great coax cable TV system, but that was 20 years ago. There's, there's some old components out there. They, they fail from time to time. So this kind of helps in that regard where we won't have that aging, failing equipment on the coax side. We'll have a good, strong fiber signal and you'll have your TV streaming right over top of it.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. It's exciting.
Exciting stuff.
Any other questions?
Mayor Lason got his steakhouse before he left. This was all I wanted.
He just wanted to cut the cord before he left. Yeah, you're done. Good work.
Okay, I would entertain a motion. Do we, yeah, we need, we need an approval of this to move forward. I'd entertain that, that motion.
I move to approve the All West TiVo transport agreement with Spanish Fork City, channel sharing agreement.
Motion made by Councilman Euler. Miss SFN didn't second it, she missed out on that.
Yeah, wow. That's a good ring.
Council, seconded by Councilman Argyle, a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
That passes. Okay, it takes us to item 10, adjourned to closed session.
Before we do that, Mayor, I want to mention that if you have not got your Dowdell puzzle between November 24th and December 2nd, the Dowdell puzzles will be on sale for $15. So if you were thinking about gifting them perhaps or getting yourself one, that was just something that we wanted to mention.
I've tried and bought 40 of them, you're gonna discount them now?
Yeah, you don't get a, you don't get a discount anymore, Chad. You can go through another 40.
Yeah, cool.
Okay.
Yeah, great reminder. Yep. If you don't get that, for everybody on your Christmas list, Councilman Gordon.
Okay. I move we go into closed session for land transaction and reasonably imminent litigation.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon to go into closed session.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argyle, roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
We're adjourned in closed session. Thanks everybody for coming, we'll see you next time.